Good morning. I'm Mayor Protem Delia Garza. I will be calling work session to order. We have a quorum. The mayor won't be joining us today. His wife is having knee surgery and we wish her well and speedy recovery. He also wanted, the mayor also wanted to let everyone know that we will continue the commission's appointments on Thursday. We'll continue to have that discussion on Thursday. And he's going to be posting something on the message board. So we have a quorum. We're in Boards and Commissions in City Hall 301 West Second Street. It's Tuesday, February 5th. It is 9:10. I think I already called the meeting to order. We're going to start with a staff briefing on our budget process. Then we're going to do, Councilmember Kassar is going to do a presentation. Then we're going to move to polled items. And right now, the items are 34, 35, 47, 48, and 55. Does anybody have any other items that they wanted to poll now? Okay. And we will be breaking. I think there's more than about five people going to a lunch at 11:30. So we're breaking for that unless, for whatever reason, we don't lose our quorum, then we can continue the meeting and hopefully we'll get, we can finish everything by 11:30. Could you have some, please?
I did. Mayor Council, as we kick off the presentation on the budget outline, just a little bit of context, as you remember, late last year, we talked about some dates for this discussion and how it would roll out throughout the year. We wanted to make sure that our new council members were a part of that discussion before anything was finalized. And so here we are today to talk about how the 2020 budget process will play out. And so Ed Vanino, our Budget Director, will walk through that presentation.
Good morning, Mayor Protem, members of the council. My name is Ed Vanino, Deputy Chief Financial Officer for the city. It's a pleasure to be before you again, talking about the city's budget. I'll warn you in advance, this is our 2020 budget, so expect a bunch of QPPI references to bringing things into focus, vision, improving the clarity, you know, and even our design, when we worked with our fabulous friends at PIO on the design, I said, "I want something that looks like, you know, 2020 vision." So this is supposed to be like bringing things into focus, like an eye thing you would see at your, at your eye doctor's office. But anyhow, just be forewarned on that. So, you know, in starting our discussion about the 2020 budget direction and process, really wanted to go back to last year's budget process. You all adopted the budget on September 12th, I believe. And you can see on September 13th here, the city manager had already put out a memo congratulating staff, thanking staff, but also warning staff that, you know, not to expect the 2020 budget to be a repeat of the 2019 budget. I had told you last year that the 2019 budget was really one of the best fiscal situations I had experienced as a person who had been involved in budgets for 19 years. There was just a lot of things that fell the right way for us last year, where we were in the fortunate position of being able to fund a lot of priorities, which was a great position to be in the first year of having our new strategic plan, SD 23. We were able to implement a lot of new initiatives to move the ball forward on that plan. But, you know, the manager warned folks last year, you know, kind of highlighted one of his quotes here about, you know, "We can't count on that in future years," and that his direction to staff was to start getting ready to focus this year's budget on continuous improvement effectiveness and efficiency. And that's particularly salient advice, given the threat that looms from the state legislature about us having a very significantly different and worsened revenue situation as we move forward, as the discussion about revenue caps continues on at the state legislature. But with all of that as backdrop, we have been, since early January, we have been pushing out to our department directors, to our department budget staff, to boards and commissions. This message, in a fiscal year 2020, it's going to be a year where we're focusing on holding the line on budget increases, other than base cost drivers, you know. So when I say hold the line on budget increases, there will be budget increases. We have contracts we've agreed to with our public safety unions. We anticipate that there will need to be some degree of civilian wage increase to keep pace with the rising labor market. Health insurance costs, things of that nature are going to go up. That always happens. But other than those types of things, we are really going to be focusing our departments on holding the line on budget increases and instead taking the opportunity to focus internally and really challenging our departments to look for ways to improve the efficiency and the effectiveness of their existing city services. How can we do, how can we deliver even better service quality at a better price? So that would be one of the focus areas. Of course, continuing the efforts to focus department missions, goals, and programs on SD 23. Kim Oliveris in the Office of Performance Management have already launched an effort with that. So now that we have strategic direction 2023, we need to make sure that all of our missions and goals and what departments are doing are in alignment and support the objectives of that plan. And then finally, we really want to target equity-related issues through our community input this year. And I'll talk a little bit more about that on the next slide. But we had some great success with our Quality of Life Commissions last year. It was, our process was very well received by them, and that's something that came from direction from council, was to change that process and the way we engage our Quality of Life Commissions. And we're building on that. We've already started building on that success from last year for this next year's process. This is what our timeline looks like, and at least from January through June, I've divided it into three tracks. These are three things that are going on concurrently, and they'll all come together in June. The first of those tracks is, is kind of perhaps the most mechanical of the tracks. It's just developing our base budgets. And so we've already kicked that off. We had a budget kickoff with financial staff on January 16th to lay out some directions in regards to development of their base budgets. When you hear me say "base budgets," just think about business is normal, but costs typically go up from one fiscal year to the next, and so we need to adjust for those costs. It's not focusing on new initiatives or new programs or realigning activities. It's just business is normal, base budget. And so that's what our departments are doing right now. They're working on developing their baseline expenditure and revenue forecast for our enterprise departments. They're also forecasting out what rates they'll need to charge, and if there'll need to be any increases in rates in order to pay for their base cost increases. We will be before this body on April 9th to talk about our base financial forecast. I just mentioned right there that the few little squares on this, on this table that are highlighted, those are council meetings. So that April 9th is highlighted in blue, that is a council meeting date. So that's our base budget track. Our second track that we are concurrently working on, our Boards and Commissions and Community Engagement, again, we had great success last year, I think, and we wanted to build on that. And one of the things we heard from the Quality of Life Commissions is they really wanted to get out of the community and hear from their constituents more directly, leading up to them making budget recommendations. So that's one thing we're working with them on. Another thing you might notice on this schedule is that it brings the dates way forward. So typically, we would be doing community engagement and working with our Boards and Commissions more intensively in the April-May timeframe. That really is too late for us to do as much as we would like to with the recommendations, because our departments are already well, well into budget development by May. You'll see in a little bit that we ask departments to submit their budget to us for final review in early June. So if we're not getting feedback from Boards and Commissions until late May, it's just too late in the process. So we've really tried to front-load this process and asking our Boards and Commissions to give us their recommendations to us by May 3rd. I do also want to talk on this section, that last year, we did a lot with the Quality of Life Commissions. There's a working group of those four commissions. And with their support, we're going to be kind of broadening some of our emphasis out this year to include all eight of the commissions that comprise the city's Joint Inclusion Commission. We have a meeting of the Joint Inclusion Committee coming up this Saturday, and we're going to be talking to them, trying to finalize a community engagement plan, and talk to them about this whole process of bringing forward their budget recommendations. And while we're focusing on those Joint Inclusion Committee, Commission groups, we're going to be working with all of our Boards and Commissions as always. So the Public Safety Commission, Parks Commission, et cetera, departments will be engaging those commissions in the conversations. But the same way that we were stressed to you, we have been stressing to them throughout our conversations, that this year's budget process is not going to be focused on creating a long list of budget wants and asks. We just are not viewing it as that being the type of budget we're looking at this year. So we're going to be focusing them on the same types of issues, effectiveness and efficiency of programs, alignment to the strategic plan, and improving equity. Then the final track is your track, the city council and your priorities. As you can see, we're here on the 5th, just talking about our budget process and timeline. The next colored date, the green one there, is March 5th. That'll be council priority setting, and so that's earlier than we've done it in the past. In the past, we've been talking to you about your priorities in April. We want to do that on March 5th. So that's the next thing that's really coming up. And just one month from today, we'll be sitting here, talking to you about what your priorities are for the 2020 budget. And I think that one's coming up so quick, I've got one slide just on that date to talk to you about what we have planned for it. Before we get to that date, though, we are planning on doing some one-on-ones with you. So I think one of the real improvements we made to our budget process, and one of the real ways we were able to communicate with you all better and get feedback from you all, was just to have one-on-one meetings with you, where we could, you know, just talk directly about what you're hoping to achieve in the budget and help you with any questions or information needs you had. So we will be continuing to do that in this budget price, process, early and often throughout the, throughout the year. After we get your priorities, the city management team, the city manager and his assistant city manager group, his executive team, will get together and provide another round of directions to the departments. So we've already provided directions to the departments in regards to the base budget, but in regards to addressing council priorities, there'll be another round of input in March. And then the expectation is for departments to provide responses to that direction by late May. And then all of this comes together with proposed budgets coming into the budget office in early June. Once we get the proposed budgets from the departments, we'll do a lot of vetting of those numbers, and then we will work with the city manager's office, again, to craft all of this into a balanced budget proposal to the city council. On this next slide, you'll get that balanced budget proposal on August 5th. Again, just highlighting that we'll be doing one-on-ones with council prior to that budget proposal coming out. We've got to go through a number of administrative, you know, legal hoops to get to a budget adoption date. So we'll be setting the maximum tax rate on August 8th. You can see we have budget work sessions scheduled on August 20th, 29th, and September 4th. And then finally, our public hearings are on August 22nd and August 28th, all leading up to a planned budget adoption on September 10th. The only other thing I want to highlight on this slide is all the dates that are not in bold or already on your calendar, you don't need to worry about, but the dates that are in bold are being proposed by staff. They're not currently on your calendars, and so they would need to get added. And so you can see them there, the budget presentation on August 5th, and the two latter work sessions on August 29th and September 4th would be new dates on your calendar. So the last thing I wanted to talk about is just this March 5th priority setting work session that comes up, that is coming up. Most of you were at that. Of course, our two new council members were not, but we met over at the New Central Library to look at the strategic plan and ask council to help us. Of all the things that are in the strategic plan, we understand they're all important or they wouldn't be in your strategic plan. But of all those things in your strategic plan, what are the things that you think are most important for the city to focus attention, its attention on, and to get better at? And over on the right, those are the 10 indicators that you said you thought were the most important things. I won't read them all, but just to give you a flavor, it was, you know, housing and homelessness and the skills and capability of our community workforce. These are the indicators that you really want us to focus on, and that was hugely helpful to staff, because then we were able to work with our departments to develop budget proposals that really were focused on those areas. And then we were able to present the budget to council around those themes as well. So we have a variation of that plan for March 5th. At the time we met last year, we did not have the detailed metrics developed yet. So all of these indicators, like housing, have more detailed metrics defined for each of them. There's about five or six metrics for each one of those indicators. The Office of Performance Measurement has coordinated that effort with departments to develop those metrics, and they've actually developed these really nice graphical dashboards for each of those indicator areas. They have already scheduled open houses on those dashboards for February 18th and the 22nd. And so the idea behind those dash, or those open houses are for you all and your staffs to be able to come and see the dashboards, have them presented to you, respond to any questions you might have about them. But we would like those metrics as presented in the dashboards to be the foundation for our March 5th work session. What we would like to do is kind of similar to last year, where we polled you all and said, "Hey, of all these indicators in the plan, let's do some polling first and understand what council's priorities were, and then start looking for consensus from that." We want to do the same thing. So if you think about five or six metrics related to housing, hey, if they're all of equal importance to you, let us know that. They're all of equal importance, and we'll try to put equal emphasis on all of them. But if some of those metrics related to homelessness you feel are really critical for us to get better at, maybe they're all important, but maybe some of the metrics you think our level of service currently is just fine, but there's some that you think we need to do better at, that's what we're hoping to get out of the March 5th work session. So we're going to put together a little exercise where we could do some pre-polling, so that when we get here on the 5th, we can say, "This would seem to be a starting point for that conversation. Within housing, these are the metrics that seem to rise to the top of the priority list. Within homelessness, these are the metrics that seem to rise to the top of the priority list." Because that'll give us some really granular information from this body to take to our departments and say, "Look, we need budget proposals that are going to improve these areas." Even if that's not about new money, right? We're talking about not having a budget year, we're going to be able to fund a lot of new initiatives, but that doesn't mean we can't be reshaping our services and programs to improve the metrics the councilists said are important. So that's our vision for the 5th, and that is all I have for you. I do want to highlight the more information, web links there at austin texas dot finance online. You can find all the presentations we make throughout the budget process, including this one, will be available at that austin texas dot gov website. Past budgets are out there, a whole wealth of information. And then at budget.austin texas.gov is where you can go to get to that really cool, open budget tool, where you can just sit there and point and click and drill down into the city's budget in as much detail as you want, and see what the budget was and what departments have spent to date. Generally, when you all ask me a question about the budget over the phone, I'm going out to Open Budget Austin and digging into the data. So it really is a wealth of information for you all, and I just wanted to bring the website to your attention again. It's still a fairly new tool, but it's a very useful tool. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Councilmember Kitchen, do you have a question?
Oh, yes. I wanted to talk a little bit about, I wanted to, I'm hoping, and I think, I think this is probably inherent in what you're talking about, but I'm hoping that when, that, I guess I would characterize it maybe a little differently, as in not can't fund new initiatives, but I'm hoping that we're really asking our departments to look closely at what's happening right now. So perhaps there's room for, and should be room for, new initiatives while we're phasing out old initiatives that perhaps aren't working as well, or perhaps have accomplished their purpose.
Right.
So, and we've, you know, we've talked about that before. I think Councilmember Alter's raised that before. So I think, I would hope that this is the time that we really do look at that.
That is, that was the-
Is that the direction?
That was the intent of my comment. So yeah, I like the way you worded it. If I worded it differently, but that is absolutely the intent. Just because there's this looming threat of revenue caps from the state legislature, that doesn't mean that we just sit on our hands and what we're doing is what we're doing. There is lots of latitude to be looking at programs that aren't working effectively and reinvesting in new programs that we think will have better outcomes.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Flanagan?
Thank you. I know, Mayor Protem, you've talked a lot about that same issue, about finding programs that maybe could be better allocated to other things. And it's just, I think we just have to acknowledge that it is not going to be an easy thing for us to do. I think we should do it. And it's not necessarily programs that have completed their purpose, but maybe that the purpose they're completing is a smaller impact than where those dollars could otherwise be spent. But with the acknowledgement that there's going to be, you know, 40 people that show up at a council meeting yelling and screaming about that program, but to those 40 people, you know, we have to be pretty straightforward about the coming up on a million people that we have to serve with this budget. So I really, really hope the staff can find a way to daylight these choices up to the council, because I'm excited to finally fulfill some of that stuff that Mayor Protem and Councilmember Alter and many of us have been talking about.
Councilmember Andrade?
Oh, yes. Ed, can you tell me, I would like to see on March 5th, a report back of how much tax breaks and tax credits that we offer in these, one instance, like the domain, you know, we waived a lot of taxes there, and I want to find out exactly the amount, because the state's going to come after us. We might have to just pull back on some of these type of tax credits that we offer to these businesses, because, you know, it's, was under the understanding that we were supposed to let growth pave, and they were going, and we gave these groups a lot of tax breaks and tax credit. And I want to see, how much do we offer them, so that the state legislators know exactly what we're giving to these businesses, so business can grow? And if they're going to be out here restricting us, I want to make sure that we're going to be able to recover a lot of those resources that we might go without.
Yep. And I can tell you off the cuff, it's in the neighborhood of $15 million in aggregate, but we have that information. We'll get it posted as a budget question in the next day or two.
Thank you.
Councilmember Kassar?
Yeah, and I just want to say out loud what I think is already in the room, which is that this is an awful presentation to receive, right? I mean, what we do, and it's not your fault, obviously. But, but I don't want 40 people coming and yelling about which program we would cut, rather a thousand people or 2,000 people coming and yelling about the fact that in a time of unprecedented prosperity in the city, we're having serious conversations about not helping more people. In fact, if we keep our budget similarly the same, because dollars run shorter, we will be helping fewer people, when we absolutely don't have to, because there's forced austerity that is, you know, being declared by statewide leaders as on the way. I mean, it sounds like, I mean, like a winter is coming type presentation, right? I mean, we're talking about not just not adding programs, but not adding programs so that we can store money away, so that we have hard, you know, have conversations about not just saving those $15 million, but that probably won't cut it, right? Talking about which fire stations we do or don't staff, or which libraries we do or not consolidate or close or not open, which staff we do or don't lay off, how people deal with not getting cost of living increases. I mean, those are the conversations that we will be forced to have. And so I just don't think that even if we find programs that aren't, that aren't working as well, even if we find those, there is just no way that we can help the people that it is we've been talking about in our strategic work sessions that we want to help. We'll be talking about how to mitigate hurt. And depending on where, you know, my, my hope is, of course, that legislators recognize that they're not going to provide real tax relief, and indeed, they'll just hurt everyday Texans. But, and I think it makes sense for us to prepare in this way, but I just want to say out loud what's in this room, which is, our strategic meetings have regularly been about how, who it is that we want to help and how it is we can use the city's budget to help more people. And what we're being presented is the unfortunate fact that, given that it seems like the legislature is more interested in forcing austerity on people rather than helping them, that we have to start preparing for that, for that potential. And I appreciate all of our staff and our manager and the budget office for looking at that in a clear-eyed way, but I just don't want it to go unsaid. So I appreciate your work, and we'll do everything we can to make it, to have made this just an exercise in what if something horrible happens. But it is important for us to plan for something that could really, really hurt people in Austin without saving them very much money. In fact, I think it will end up costing them.
Councilmember Alter?
Thank you. I think it's important that we recognize that there's two parts to the budget situation that we're facing this year. One is that last year, when we got to budget, we had done a lot of things right over the prior year that put us in a good financial position to have options and things that we could reinvest our money in. And this year, we are not going to have necessarily the advantage of that with the way the revenues are coming in, and just because we took advantage of a lot of those things last year. Then in addition, there is the potential threat of the revenue cap. So there's, there's two things working. We had a very fortunate year last year, because we did some hard work that was necessary to get us into that position. And then this year, we don't have all of those things coming together. The revenue caps, I think, we need our community to recognize these decisions that may be before us, and we need our community to be raising their voices at the Capitol and recognizing that there will be things that we will not be able to fund, whether they're new things or old things. Those additional police officers that you're asking for, where's the money going to come from? The additional firefighters, where's the money going to be coming from? That park where you want to have equipment that is safe for your children to go on? That pothole that you want fixed? They're really very real choices that will be before us as we move forward if these revenue caps are imposed. And as I'm understanding the current proposal, which I don't have all of the details, since we don't know them yet, it seems like not only are they imposing revenue caps, they are going to punish us for growing, for being the innovative city that we are, that is attracting capital, and saying that we can't grow it more than 2.5% even with our growth, if I'm understanding the numbers correctly. And that just seems totally counter to what the state of Texas should be asking us to do. Instead, they should be nurturing and cultivating Austin. And imagine what we could do if we were working in support, with the support of the state government. So I would, you know, ask our community to recognize that revenue caps, although complicated, are real. They come with a twin, which is school finance reform. And if you want to know where your property taxes are going, it is going to pay for schools all over the state, because the state is not paying its share. And we really have to understand this math, and we can't let ourselves be set up in a situation that we are blinded by what is the reality of, of these numbers. I want to echo also what was said a little bit earlier with respect to finding ways to invest in our priorities. We do need to stop doing some things and start doing others. But the fact of the matter is, a huge portion of our budget is spent on personnel, and there's just only so much room to maneuver. We have to pay for the water chemicals that go into treating our water, and we have to be able to put our poles up and service them and do all of these things. We don't, there are a lot of things where we really don't have a choice if we want to provide the safety that we deserve. There's a lot that could be said here, but I did want to make those viewpoints. Thank you.
If I could just piggyback off those comments and some of the, of the previous ones, this isn't just about our community members, you know, speaking up at the Capitol. Our business community needs to be there as well. We approve millions of dollars in contracts, procurement contracts, every single council meeting. I know we've had discussions about possibly having some kind of presentation where we can bring in the business community and do some kind of, you know, presentation that shows, here are the millions of dollars in contracts that the city approves, and this, these revenue caps could affect their, our ability to continue to extend those contracts, as well as those companies' ability to employ some of our Austinites. And so I think, you know, that needs to be part of the conversation as well. There was a resolution on retrospective review, and I was just curious if, and if we don't have an answer right now, I can, I can circle back. But that was about looking at old programs that maybe aren't doing exactly what we, we need them to be doing, or aren't necessary anymore. Just back to the conversation about, you know, efficiencies and improving the efficiency. So if I could get an update on, on where that was?
Yeah, just real quick, that, that effort is well underway. A very comprehensive process has been launched. Our departments have provided information. It's currently being looked at, but council's going to get a memo in maybe this week or next, asking for an extension. It's well underway, but we're not going to be able to meet the deadline you asked for. But we are working on it, and, you know, I would say in a month or two, just off the cuff, I'm not directly responsible for that, but I would think in a month or two, you'll be able to see the results of that effort.
Okay. And I was just, are the biggest changes the, the earlier process? I was trying to see what the biggest change, so like, the early February Boards and Commissions seem to make a bigger, a change from previous budget processes, as well as the community forums in March and April? I feel like those happened a little later?
Well, they definitely happened later, and I'm glad you said that, because we would still love the opportunity to come out to your town hall meetings. And I was out at yours just last month, but, you know, next month, but May, June, July, August, throughout the budget process, I would love to come out to your town hall meetings and support those. But these community forums would be focused on the different equity commissions. So a community forum related to the African-American Advisory Commission, a community forum related to the Commission on Seniors. So that those commissions, they've said- So that those commissions, they've said they want to get feedback in advance of making recommendations to the city. So we're trying to help them and facilitate that conversation, and to get those recommendations earlier enough where our departments can do something with them. So that's why we're bringing those up so far, so far, but we still would be having other community engagement opportunities throughout the process.
Okay, and lastly, I just, I think, I think it's great that we're changing this to an earlier, you know, timeline, and I think it's, and all of us need to make sure that we're educating our constituents and educating the public on this new process. I know that, you know, many times, we get these, you know, requests, like in late August or something, and, you know, sometimes it's so hard to add additional things, so I think it's incumbent on us to have, as, as council members, to have a little more discipline about setting ex, managing expectations, and making it clear that, that we're, you know, we're, we're doing budget different this year, and, and we really need input as early as possible. And then there comes a point, you know, I know there's always emergency initiatives, but there comes a point where we have to be able to say, you know, most of the budget process is done, and, you know, to listen, but I think it's important that we have maybe a little bit more discipline as council members to manage expectations, especially with, with looming revenue caps.
So just real quick on that topic, we are working with our Corporate Public Information Office on outreach efforts and messaging, and we want to provide that to all of you. So to the extent you want to use it in your messaging to your constituents, you would have access to that as well.
Councilmember Topol?
Thank you. Yeah, thank you for this presentation and the opportunity to, to begin to think about how we're going to approach this year's budget. I completely agree with, with Councilmember Alter and others who have, who have really talked about the state and, and what needs to happen there, and I would, I would urge our legislators who are considering tax caps to really think through how this will impact cities throughout this, throughout the state. It is going to be, if it moves forward, would really have a dire impact. We do, I, I, my particular question is how we're soliciting community impact on the work that the staff is doing with existing programs. I think it's very important that the resolution has asked our management and our staff to look at the programs and determine effectiveness, but I think we also need to make sure that the community has an opportunity to provide that feedback, as well as, in many cases, they're the ones engaging directly in those services. And I just want to say, you know, I appreciate the comments about early needs being identified. We will always need to remain somewhat flexible to those needs that come up. And while it's true that we have organizations that come in, and we need to manage those expectations that, you know, we, we will not be, it is a very different budget year, and, and all of the things you all have said, it's also true that we sometimes have groups coming down and raising concerns because of dire needs that are not going to be met if we can't identify the funds. And I'll just, you know, remind this group again, that in, in some budget years, those last-minute needs have preserved meals for seniors at our congregate meals programs. In one budget year, it preserved childcare for women in our Women and Children's Shelters. So, you know, I want to be sure that, that members of the public listening to this discussion don't get the wrong impression about the needs that we hear late in the budget process that we're trying to meet, and we will always need to have that. In my opinion, we always need to provide for that flexibility to meet those really important basic needs. And so that makes the work that you all are doing, to identify the programs that may be less effective really critical. So please do figure out a way to, to get that community impact on this as well, feedback on this as well.
Councilmember Poehl?
Thanks, I just had two quick questions. Will we be doing a mid-year budget amendment this year? Are there any plans for that?
Councilmember Poehl, not that I'm aware of, but there will be things that do come up, and we'll make sure that those are presented well in advance, so you can contemplate them before their, their decisions before the council.
Great, thanks. And then for Mr. Vannino, the fee schedule. How are we doing on our enterprise funds paying for the work that they provide to the community? And will we be having updates on our fee schedule to ensure that rising costs are captured by the folks who are, who go to those departments for services, which has been a policy of the council in the past, too?
Right. So, I mean, when it comes to the rising costs and having our fees keep pace with them, the enterprise departments generally do a very good job of that out of necessity. I mean, they're financially, they're islands unto themselves, and so if the Resource Recovery Department's not charging high enough fees to cover the cost of curbside collection, they're going to go into a negative, and we'll have to remedy that. On the general fund departments, though, is where we've been focusing our efforts to take a look at different services that departments charge a fee for, and trying to keep those fees, to have them at least to some degree, keep pace with growing costs. And so you saw last year, a number of fee recommendations staff brought forward. I anticipate we will do that again this year, bring forward a number of, of fee proposals to help offset tax burdens, which I think is going to be more important than ever this year. But I could follow up with some, too, to see if there's specific departments or specific fees you're concerned about, because we can certainly focus our attention on some of those.
One of the places I'd like to, to look is in Development Services and make sure that all of the staff from the various departments are, in fact, receiving compensation through that process for the efforts, the time and the effort that they're putting into reviews.
And we have been working on that, so you will see, you will see that. And of course, the Development Services Department, now set up as an enterprise, has done a really good job of that, with some of the other departments, parks, for example. We've not done as good a job assessing the fees to offset those costs, and so you'll see that this year, for sure.
Good, thank you.
Did you have something else, Councilmember Kitchen?
Yes, one, one last thing, and I apologize if you already talked about it, but in years past, we've received a list of resolutions that the council has passed that has not been funded. I, did y'all talk about this already? No? Okay. I would like to see that list earlier in the process. I'm thinking that for our March 5th, that that would be the time to, to make us aware of the things that we've passed, that, you know, some of those things were contemplated for, for the next budget cycle, or there may be other, other things about them, about why they're not yet in programs. I'd like to understand that. For, for the most part, I, I think in terms of those, as the new initiatives that we've already set as a priority. And so I would want to, I would want them to be, I would want departments to think in terms of how, of, of operating those, putting, making those operational, and considering what other kinds of programs they might need to adjust in order to do that. Again, we need to look at the list again to, to think through whether our, our memory, my memory is correct on that, but that's why I'd like to see it on March 5th. Is that, would that be possible?
It would be.
Okay, thank you. All right, well, thank you for that sharp presentation.
Appreciate it.
Very focused, very focused presentation.